Okay, next item, item three. Discuss, consider any necessary action regarding the county monument, the monument following report of the committee. We have several people here that have given a, passed in a card saying they would like to speak on this item. Remind everybody that we would ask that you respect the time of the Commissioners' Court and all our visitors. And I'm going to ask Karen to time everybody for us so we keep your comments to three minutes. And the first person that I have here is Bill Hart. Ms. Hart, if you'd care to come up here and tell us your name and where you live, and be glad to hear your comments. You know, it used to be when you're trying to separate documents like that, you lick your fingers, right? But you can't do that, you can't do that anymore.
Hi, I'm Bill Hart, and I live in Forney, Texas. There's a lot of, I'm sure, talks about the monument. The thing I would like to talk about is monuments in general. In 1966, I was drafted into the Army. In 1967, I spent a year in Vietnam. There's, out on Highway One north of Saigon, there was a big monument, which I've given you pictures of. And the, it was, it was a picture of a soldier guarding the front of a South Vietnamese veterans' cemetery. It was a cemetery named Benoit Cemetery. It was there, started in 1965. They claim the earliest graves were in '68. You have to realize that there are different customs for different countries. Our veteran cemeteries here are taken care of by people we hire to keep them all mowed. Over there, they were done by the families of the groups. So in 1975, the North Vietnamese took over the South. At that time, there were probably 16,000 burials in that cemetery. In 2009, there were only 12,000 that they could find. Well, after the Vietnamese, the North Vietnamese took over the South, they renamed the city of Saigon Ho Chi Minh City, which most of you know. Also, this statue was up on Highway One north of Saigon. They tore it down. They also changed the name of the cemetery from Benoit Cemetery to Anan Cemetery. Then they closed it so the families couldn't get back in there and redo or clean up their graves. The cemetery was closed until 2006. So the families couldn't get in to tend their graves, therefore that little history of verbal about who's buried here and whatnot was kind of lost. Then they went, they took, had retraining camps for South Vietnamese soldiers and citizens that were on the South side. And lastly, they rewrote the history books. You check with a kid in Vietnam now, and he doesn't know anything about a North-South War. They claim that there were three stages of the war. Stage one was American Special War. It was a modern American invasion, which used South Vietnamese military under American advisors. And stage two was an American Limited War, 1965 to '68. It also was a modern American invasion. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess my time is up.
Well, extend for, I mean, you can finish it, just finish up with what your comments.
Okay. And then, there were three, three versions of the war. There were no, they did not, in the history books, they don't show the number of North Vietnamese that were killed. Only American deaths and traitor deaths. All battles were won by the North. It was a war against American invasion. Only Americans and their allies are guilty of war crimes and atrocities. There never was a North and South. So in essence, you can change history. It's like today, we're moving Confederate statues around, putting them somewhere, we're changing names of schools, streets, and buildings. It's kind of a similar deal.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Bill Hart served as one of the co-chairs of the Citizens Monument Commission. Just kind of a little review there. On July 14th, the Commissioners' Court approved forming a Monument Citizens Commission to study the issue of the monument in front of the court, in front of the courthouse. Each member of the court appointed three members to the commission. And then on August 20th, the Citizens Commission had a kickoff meeting, and they continued, and I think they had, Bill, you had 14 or 16?
Fourteen.
14 meetings, all around the county. And then November 10th, they reported findings back to the Commissioners' Court. And we want to thank you, Bill, and thank everybody who, all of the members of the commission and the people who came and spoke and expressed their opinion. So we have another, Rob Jones is with us, and if you want, care to come up.
Let's see if I can get my timer to work here now. All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rob Jones. I'm an attorney from Chatfield. I represent a number of citizens and voters, and as they always tell me to tell you, taxpayers in Kaufman County. I also represent the owner of the monument, the cenotaph, the sons of Confederate veterans in Texas. Well, I come before you because we are here at this point, this is what in the trade, my line of work, we call the jury summation. You all are essentially the jury on this, because you're going to make the decision on whether the cenotaph remains where it is or not. Now, also, you are a little bit different than a jury, though, because you are the judge as well. You have decided what evidence that is permissible for you to look at. You have set up a committee, and this commission or committee that the judge alluded to a few moments ago is unique. All of the other counties that I have been involved in their decision-making and the issues of their Confederate monuments chose not to do that. They chose simply for the Commissioners' Court or the City Council to make the decision. But you all did select that, for good or bad, and you had two very hard-working chairs. You've heard from one, Bill Hart, the other one also Mr. Jackson, I believe. And both worked very hard. I compliment them. They had the 14 meetings all around the county, and most of the members worked very hard. Now, the results of that is the evidence that is presented to you all. Why in the world would you go against that evidence if you went to all the trouble of putting forth this committee? And the evidence was overwhelmingly that the people of Kaufman County want this monument to remain. That dovetails quite nicely with what was in the referendum in the primaries of the Republican Party earlier this year. Were you to count the Democratic votes, every one of them, every one of them, as not wanting the monument up, and I think that's a stretch to do that, you'd still have 75% of the voters of this county saying that they want the monument to remain. That dovetails almost exactly with what the committee came up with. So you have before you, as the triers of fact on this, the evidence. And I respectfully would ask you to consider that evidence and not go against the great weight and preponderance, as we lawyers like to say, of the evidence. So I thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you today, and you all have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have a card from Jennifer Robinson. If you'd come up and give us your name and where you live.
I live out in the county. 400 years ago, my first ancestors set foot on this continent off a ship called the Mayflower. The descendants of those ancestors have fought in pretty much every war on both sides of the war between the states, which is where this monument comes into play. But it's not just a monument, it is a cenotaph, whether you believe it or not. Almost six months ago, I started this fight to save that cenotaph. I have endured people calling me horrible names, screaming obscenities while I stood out there in front of that courthouse. I have had my job threatened, I have had my life threatened, as have many of these people who have supported me and been out there right with me. You notice, we don't see a lot of the other side here, because they like to hide behind masks, they like to hide in their houses and simply cause problems. There have been people brought into this county who want to destroy our country. And they say, oh, move it to a cemetery, move it to a museum. But that's not the answer, because museums and cemeteries are being destroyed. These cenotaphs were not meant to be moved around, and that's the entire goal of these people. Move them around until they fall apart, if they aren't destroyed by people before that There is a Marxist agenda in this country. They want to take down everything that our country was built on. I was told to let the process of the Citizens Monument Committee play out, and I've had to fight every step of the way to make sure that it was fair, because there were people on the committee who were trying to destroy our soldier. They were using everything in their power to sway the committee to their way of thinking. I've let the committee play out, and even though so many people were intimidated and would not come to those meetings and would not stand up because they were afraid of having their businesses lost, of having their jobs lost, of being physically attacked, enough people still came out in this county and told that committee, leave it alone. If you vote to get rid of it, you will be playing into a Marxist agenda, and we will not forget that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have Michael Embry. Just for the record, if you'd come up and give us your name and where you live.
My name's Michael Embry. I live out in Lively. It's been a weird year with the pandemic and the rise of Antifa and BLM, and a greatly, greatly flawed election. And the Confederate monument, who would have thought, just a little while ago, a year or two ago, that we'd be wanting to destroy our monuments? And now we had, had a committee to consider the issue, but keep in mind, as has already been mentioned before, that the consensus of the people of this county was back in February, when the Republicans voted almost 100%, 15,000 voters, almost, to maintain and keep all of our Confederate monuments, or all of our monuments. So I think the committee may have been superfluous, because the voice of the people's already been heard. And let me tell you, too, which has been said already, is that at one of the rallies here that we were at to protect the monument from Antifa, the Antifa was having their own rally, that Antifa members had said that, we're starting at Confederate monuments, and we're going to move all the way back to the Mayflower, we want to destroy it all. And their goal, of course, is, as Mr. Hart alluded to, to rebuild the society and teach people whatever they want us to believe. And also, a committee member, a committee member that does not support keeping the monuments told me he's well-aware of the fact that this is a Marxist action to remove the monuments. I asked him, too, and I said, you know this is Marxist? And he says, oh, yes, I know. So that's kind of who you're dealing with, that's who we're facing, are these people who don't share the same values that we do, but who somehow have garneted your ear, I don't know how. But if we live in a society now that's going to follow the whims and fashion of radicals such as Antifa and BLM, and we have no recourse, I guess you're going to go ahead and tear the statue down. But if we still have a society that values its voters, its taxpayers, its people's opinions, its people's heritage, its people's culture, and I think we do still live in that society, I think you should not touch that statue, it should stay. It's part of our history here, and it's part of our culture here, and the people of this county desire it to be that way. And I think this committee, this, excuse me, this Commissioners' Court and the judge, I think they're that kind of people. I think they desire to do what their taxpayers and their voters want them to do. Does that mean? Okay. But that's all I have to say. I think, I think you'll make the right decision.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. And then we have Ms. Hurley. Good morning.
Commissioners. I want to thank you for the invocation that you led this morning. You started us out on such a right note, because we do live in a Christian, a Christian country who does believe in a higher being, and it really does get the court started off right. I do also appreciate the fact that we prayed for our soldiers, because they are so incredibly important to us being able to have the opportunity to meet here today, to have our constitutional rights, because they fight for our freedoms. So I do thank you for that, I do appreciate that. I have had the opportunity to speak here in front of the Commissioners' Court before, so I'll keep my comments very brief. But just a couple of things I did want to, did want to recognize, but some of our previous speakers have already recognized those items, so I'm just going to illustrate a couple of other points. First off, I'm in favor of us keeping the monument here in Kaufman County. I think that's very important. Kaufman County, breaking news, it was a social media poll. Yes, it is an unofficial poll, but it's social media, which we know we're listening to and seeing a lot of. 86% of the people who voted in that unofficial poll said, keep the monument. 86%. So the constituents are in favor. Don't let the words, y'all are gentlemen that have, that have seen lots of debates and, and things happen throughout your term on the court, don't let the words of a few overdo what your constituents are saying to you. Our veterans, whether they be our current veteran, our current soldiers right now, or whether they be veterans any time since Texas has been a state, or even before it was a state. In fact, our moms, our daughters, our wives prayed for those soldiers. They were soldiers who fought under a Confederate flag, which was an official flag of the state of Texas. So please, do the right thing, please do what your constituents are asking, and let the monument remain in its current place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. That's the last, that's the last card I have for somebody wanting to speak, so that moves us on to, to the agenda item that we're talking about, which is item three. Discuss, consider any necessary action regarding the Kaufman County monument, following the report of the committee. As you know, the committee made no recommendation. The committee never had any authority whatsoever to make any decisions. We, the, the intention of that committee was to allow everybody to have a chance to voice their opinion, and I think they did a fantastic job at that. So Commissioners, anybody have anything they want to add to this discussion?
Well, we're going to start it.
I guess we'll start on, we'll start on precinct one, you know. Next time, we'll go from four back the other way.
Believe me, this is, this is something that, that I've taken seriously, and I've listened to both sides of, of this. And I, and then I don't know if I can really put in words how I really feel. It's, I don't, if I truly believed taking down that statue would change the way we look at each other as human beings and respect each other, change that, I would be for moving it in a heartbeat. I don't think moving the statue is going to change how we look at each other. I think that's something that you're raised with, your parents make that influence on you as a child, and you grow up, and the people that you are around influence you. There's people that helped you grow as individuals and respect others. And I don't think some material thing, like moving that, is going to change what some of the issues really are. History is, is our history. It's just like my history is my history, and the mistakes I've made and the things I've done right are part of me. I think it's foolish on my part not to acknowledge the mistakes that I've made. So, I mean, we have our history, but we need to acknowledge some of the faults that, of what we've done as a, as a nation, and as a people, and as individuals. I think that that statue can start a conversation, and it has started a conversation, and I applaud the people that brought it up, addressing issues that we need to actually talk about that are greater than just history and that statue. And I applaud them for doing that, and I, and I really want to say thank you to the committee members, because they suffered a lot of stuff during the committees that they had to deal with during the committees. I've, I've got a lot of comments, I've got comments both ways. And just to be totally frank, a lot of them are really from the heart, and they really truly are saying this because of history. Some of them are saying what they want to say just because someone's telling them what to do. And then you can read between the lines, there's more to it than just dealing with the statue that represents history on both sides. You know, you can, you can see that. So I would like to propose that we put something up there to acknowledge where we are as a country right now, and where we want to be as a people, and how we want, and, and not belittle the history by no means, but to make a statement that this here can be a conversation starter with your own kids and with people, and with my family, this has been, it's been a conversation starter. And not everybody agrees and sees it the same way. And I've got a pretty big family, so.
Yeah, you do.
You know, so it's, it's, you know, but we're all, we all see things different, but I think we do have a problem nationwide with systemic racism. It's been here since the world began. There's been slaves, there's been everything, I mean, and we all harbor our own prejudices, you know, but as we grow as people, and we realize that those prejudices, sometimes they're not as factful as what you think they are for a certain amount of time. So I would like to see if there's some way that we could get together and, and acknowledge for the conversation, so a parent, black, white, pink, round, short, whatever, can come up there with their kids and talk about the situation. We can't control what that parent is going to tell their kids or how they're going to raise their kids. Don't want to go there, but at least it starts a conversation, as a conversation piece. I, I just, I just don't see us spending the money in our budget to move something that's going to cost so much. And I really wish we had a more firm cost. We, the committee said that, that heard somewhere around $400,000 is the only information I've gotten, but that's a lot of money to take from the coffers of the county for something from the bottom of my heart, I don't feel like is going to change what we really need to address and have the conversation as a people, as a county, and as the cities. So I don't guess I rambled, but I'm number one, so I'm the first ones. You're number two.
That brings us to precinct commissioner of precinct number two.
Yes, and, and I want to applaud the people who stepped up for the committee and Bill Hart, which is in my precinct, of course. And I, I really admire them for holding meetings. I sat in the meetings on both of their meetings. I didn't actually sit in there, I kind of stood outside and listened, and listened to everybody's thoughts and, and so, you know, it's, it's one of these things, it's kind of hard not to ramble if you want to ramble about, you know, everything from being prejudiced to whatever, what, I'm, I'm with, I'm with Mike on this. I think that, that if you remove something that would make a difference, you know, I saw a TV story on Cusable in another town, and, and I, I understood that. That one made real sense, that they needed to take something down or cover something up. In our case, you know, I, this happens to be a private. I've been to Vietnam, too. I've seen this same identical statue. It kind of bothers you to think that people do want to change history, and it has been noted that people have changed history. They did change history in this. And it's not changing the future, and that's what we should be talking about, changing the future. If you want, if you want progress, and you want relationships, and you want people to be kind to other people and understand what they feel, then you need to address the future, not the past. The past is exactly the past, but you don't want to forget the past. You can only learn from the past, you can only learn from your mistakes. It's very hard to learn from the future. So you need to change and address the future. And if this monument would make a big difference by moving it, I'd be the same way. I'd be, this is a private. This is a person or monument that people put up to address that their children went off to war. It's not a general, it's not a president, it's not anybody. It's just a symbol of who they allowed to go off and fight a war, whether they liked the war, whether they believed in the war, whether, I'm sure that, it's just like the war that I was in when I was in Vietnam. I'm sure that 50% of the people didn't like the war, and I'm sure 50% of them probably liked it. I don't, I don't have a clue. I mean, I don't, you know, we are following our leaders, and that's what we do, that's what every country does, that's what everybody, they follow their leaders and they change their leaders. So, you know, but erase the history is not a good, it's not a good, it's not a good, it's just not a good thing to me. So I, I'm with the, I'm going to concur with Mike about, it's just, it's just not a thing that warrants moving to me. That's just the way I feel about it. I've thought a lot about it, believe me, I've talked to a lot of people about it, but I just don't think it can change anything. And our budget, our money in Kaufman County is very important. And in, what, a year and a half, it won't even be in front of the courthouse. It'll be in front of an old courthouse, but it won't be in front of the Justice Center where the courts are. So, but if you could come up with something that justified or helped people understand what it was, that, that's wonderful. I don't, I'm not sure how you'd do that, but that's something for everybody to decide. Now, I feel like I'm rambling, but I just believe that you got to go back to what the statue is. And the statue's 110-year-old, something that somebody put there. And like I said, he's a no-named private individual, so it makes it pretty tough. So that's about all I have.
Okay. With us by phone, I guess Commissioner Barber, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm still here. I'd like to say I do agree with Commissioner Hine and Commissioner Phillips on that.
Okay, nothing else to add?
No, sir, not this time.
Good luck. Commissioner Cates?
Well, I, too, would like to thank the committee that worked so hard on this, and also... Well, I too would like to thank the committee that worked so hard on this, and also really the citizens of Kaufman County, just as both, as all the commissioners have acknowledged, we've all received many, many, many communications, letters, emails, in-person visits, telephone conversations. Clearly, there was an interest in this, in this matter, and I, I will say that in my precinct, precinct four, the communications that I got were overwhelmingly in favor of leaving the monument, leaving the statue in situ where it is right now. I spent a lot of time, I, I made a huge effort to try to be completely neutral in this and to hear the input, delay any kind of, of decision-making on my part until I heard from the committee and as many of the, the citizens of this county as, as wanted to communicate with me. I happen to be a history major, so I'm, I'm a lover of history. I also, like, like Commissioner Phillips and some of the other speakers here, I'm a, I'm a former soldier. I've been to three wars, and I, I know the burden that, that goes with that responsibility when young men go off to war. All that being said, I really, I've concluded a few things that I think are worthy of mentioning. No doubt about it, history is history. You can ignore history, but it doesn't change. History is history, and, and if we don't acknowledge our history, if we don't learn from it, you know, I think it's a cliche, we're doomed to repeat the, the mistakes of the past. Similarly, art is art, and there is an artistic component to this, to this debate. I, I think that the, all of the monuments, whether they're in, in the Republic of Vietnam or whatever they're called now, or, or in Kaufman County, they all have an artistic element. And of course, as we've, we've heard here this morning and previously, the, the classification of this statue as a centotaph brings a different perspective because it becomes truly, a centotaph becomes truly a memorial to the dead that are not otherwise buried in a cemetery perhaps where their graves were unknown in some other part of the, of the country during the conflict. So all of those things are, were, were factors that I considered. I also considered that I, I believe that in America, I mean, we are all Americans first, we, we love our state, but that's why we pledge allegiance to the American flag first, we're first Americans. And in America, we have evolved as a society. We're certainly far from perfect, but I think that our, our evolution, our culture has, has had a great leap forward from the time of the Civil War and that, that horrible conflict. And I believe that we have the ability today, most of us as citizens have the ability to delineate the wheat from the chaff, if you will, that we can, we can embrace the positive things of the past without embracing or, or without continuing the flaws that existed in some of those different perspectives, which are historical. People, people during that time had a completely different perspective, they had a different educational standard, and I think we have moved well beyond that in this nation, to our credit. And I don't think that you have to throw the baby out with the bathwater, if you will, so that you don't, we're not required to accept all or none. We, we have the ability to separate that wheat from the chaff and make good decisions and, and acknowledge heritage and history without that implying that we embrace flawed And the last thing that really weighed on me that I want to mention is, is a, was presented to us, I think on the very first day that this ever came in front of the Commissioners' Court, that this issue came, and without getting in the weeds, one of the speakers told a story of how he had been involved in taking a prisoner that was due in court, and that, that, that prisoner, from my understanding, was a minority prisoner, and as he went to court that day into our courthouse across the street, he had to pass underneath that, that Confederate statue, and that, in the telling, if I, if I'm getting it correctly, that prisoner, that defendant expressed real concern that how could, how could a black man get any justice in a county that had a statue like that in front of its courthouse? So I, I think, you know, I hope I got most of the details of that right. And the thing that struck me that day, and that has really resonated with me for the rest of the time that we have debated and considered this, is, is my absolute belief that that defendant that day did get an incredible portion of objective, supportable, American justice. I, I think if we could talk to that individual, and I have no idea what the outcome of that guy's trial was or, or that particular hearing, but if you look at the diversity that exists in our county, in our elected officials, in our courts, our judges, our prosecutors, our sheriff's office, if you look at the, the, the true diversity that, that exists in Kaufman County government, many, many of our department heads are females, like our auditor. I think we, we are a living example that perhaps the unfortunate sentiments that were the perspective of those historical Confederates back in the day are long dismissed in this county. I think that that day, that that individual who expressed his concern he couldn't get justice in Kaufman County, I'm confident he got absolute justice, that, that, that the law was served, that, that our American way of life was served, that his constitutional rights were protected. And I wonder, really, when the defendant left the courthouse that day, if he still felt the same way as he passed underneath that statue, because I'm confident that, that he absolutely got justice in our county, and that's the, that's the Kaufman County that I'm proud of. That's the, that's the societal evolution, I think, that we have, that we have brought forward since the 1860s. And so in my last thing, because now I know I'm rambling, Keith, I think our, I think our living example of how we conduct ourselves, of how we treat each other, but particularly of how our government and our justice system does in fact deliver blind justice. Admittedly, there are glitches and errors, but I think that we, I think that we live the example that might overwhelm any negative connotations that might, you know, minutely remain from, from our Confederate statue across the street. So because I have the ultimate faith in this county and in its citizens, and, and I support the, the sentiment that the other commissioners have verbalized that it's really about how we treat each other, and, and would removing a statue change that or not, those kind of determinations are made in your heart, and, and a piece of concrete or granite doesn't change that. So all that being said, I see absolutely no reason to, to take any action on this statue. I think it serves its purpose, and, and again, while it may have a, while it may have an inscription that is set in stone over there that, that may or may not be the, the, what we wish it would be, that is, even that inscription is a thing of the past, and we, we honor our soldiers, we honor people in this country that, that did their duty as they saw it at the time, but we don't live in those times anymore, and I, I think our living, current example is a great contrast. So I, I see no reason to, certainly not to expend any county funds, nor to take any action with this statue.
Let me just make one brief comment, and then we'll try to conclude this matter. I don't think there's anything ever bad about civil dialogue. I think something, I think, think good things come when people are willing to have a conversation and talk to each other, and, and this is a hard thing sometimes because some of us are very strong in our opinions, but civil dialogue and trying to, what started, really what started this whole thing for me was a conversation that I had with someone who I respect, and, and she said, before we, you know, we were trying to decide whether to move on this or what to do, and she said, "It's very important that everybody have a chance to voice their opinion." And that's where the, that was the idea where the commission sprung up, and I'm very proud of that. I'm really proud of the way that they conducted themselves, particularly the, the goals, those who stepped up to lead that effort, and trying to hear and understand what somebody else believes in their heart is, has great value. And there seems to be, there seems to be a trend that so many people believe that if you don't agree with me, then you're a bad person. And, and I think that, I think we saw a lot of the other side of this here. I think a lot of people in this whole process, some people weren't able to get there, but I think a lot of people made an effort to try to understand how somebody else felt about it, and that's, that's always a good thing. So, unless anybody else has, has anything to add after this exhaustive discussion. What's before us is item three on the agenda, discuss, consider any necessary action regarding the Kaufman County monument, following the report of our committee. Is our motion?
Well, I guess we're.
I think the sentiment, Judge, is that there's really no need for action.
I guess, I mean, I guess that's what we're saying.
Okay. I'll call for a motion, yeah. I'll call for a motion again. Is there a motion regarding item three on the agenda?
I make a motion that no action be taken.
Well, I, I don't, can I just, I think you were right the first time. If there is no motion, I mean, I don't think you make, we don't need to make a motion to take no action. Is that right, Karen?
Right.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so we, so I don't hear, there isn't a motion, and so if there's, there's no motion, then we pay.